I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect.
Okay, could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 22nd in the year 2025, and this is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Bergen Record, Al Esbelito, and posted with the city clerk on Thursday, April 17th of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and made available to the public.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez. Commissioner Gangadin. Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, we have five Commissioners present. We have a quorum.
And we do want to welcome our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Patel. He's gonna do great things. I'm expecting a lot.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, could we swear in the staff, please, Mike?
I see Joseph Matt Sofia, Matt, Junru, Eric, Cameron, you guys swearing this morning. You're going to get the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Do we have any correspondence, Cam?
No, Chairman. Just for the record, we've marked into the evidence the sunshine announcement as B1.
Okay, thank you. There are two items that I want to move up that are in new business. They'll be brief. I want to call item nine is the review and discussion of certified artist Mel D. Cole, Emma Louise Nabuki Takaman, and Norman Kirby. Formal action may be taken.
Okay, Chairman. So, the Artist Certification Board has reviewed the applications for the artists before us tonight, and they have certified that they met criterias 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and they are recommending them to be certified artists, to be eligible for the artist housing, and planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Cam. Does anybody have any questions? We have planning's recommendation. Okay, is there anybody here from public that wants to comment? Anyone from public?
No public, I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Could we have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, I'll wait for the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve the review and discussion of the certified artist Mel D. Cole, Emma Louise Nabuki Takaman, and Norman Kirby, and send over to City Council for formal adoption.
Second.
All right, wave a motion and a second for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel. And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna call item 15. It's case P2025-0006. It's a minor site plan for 15 Marion Place. Counsel, good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Jones from Zublaton Jones, on behalf of the applicant, Dish Wireless. Dish is an FCC licensed telecommunications carrier who's proposing to install three panel antennas on the existing residential building at 15 Marion Place. The antennas will be at a centerline height of 48 feet on the rooftop, which has a top height of around 41 feet 4 inches. The proposed use is a permitted use in the R1 zone, and the applicant has reviewed the staff review letter by Junru and agrees to meet all of the conditions, including painting the proposed antennas matte gray.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Anybody? Any questions?
No, sir.
Steve, any questions?
Nope.
Okay. All right, is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application?
Saying no public, I move to close the public portion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Junru, anything you want to add?
No, staff recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2025-0006 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's get into old business. Item A is a one-year extension of approval for case P20071. Address is 58 to 60 Center Street, York Street, York Street, that's odd, and 214 Bright Street. Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before I begin, I have item 17, and I'd like to request adjournment with our notices carried to a date certain, please.
Okay, Cam, do we have a date?
This would be May 27th.
Okay, so we'll carry case P2024-0200 as a preliminary and final major site plan for 146 Summit Ave to a date certain. I'm sorry, Cam, I forgot already.
May 27th.
27th?
7th.
7th, okay, to May 27th. Thank you, Counsel.
Okay, thank you. Returning to case P2025-0036, for the record, my name is Tom Lean of the Law Firm of Connel Foley. This is a request for a one-year extension. Just to give the board a little bit of background, the board approved case P20071 on 4/20 of 2021 to develop a five-story, 100-unit building, ground floor retail, and 25 parking spaces at the listed property. It is within the Bates Street Redevelopment Plan area. We did come before this board previously, and we requested two-year extensions. That was under case P23042. That took us to April 20th of this year, which obviously just passed. We are requesting that the final one-year extension be granted to bring us into 2026, excuse me. The reason being is twofold. One, we are continuing to work with the JCMUA on some pretty significant improvements that will enable the property to actually be developed. They're currently doing some significant work over there in the Bates Street Redevelopment area. And we're also working with planning right now on some amendments to the Bates Street Redevelopment Plan that will affect this development. We do anticipate coming back to this board to take advantage of those amendments and comply with them, but until that time, we are just requesting that the board extend this for one more year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counsel. Any questions? Anyone? No. Okay, is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment?
Saying no public, I move to close the public.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, anything you want to add?
Planning is only gonna ask that the conditions from the original approval remain in effect.
And we can accept that.
Okay. Planning staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2025-0036 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel. All right, let's move on to item B. It's a site plan extension for 165 Newark Avenue. Case P2025-0046. Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening, everybody. James McCann from the Law Firm of Connel Foley in Jersey City, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is indeed an application for a one-year extension. If granted, the extension would carry to January 8th, 2026. Little background on the project. This was originally approved in 2019. It is a combination renovation and new construction project at 163-165 Newark Avenue. It's mixed-use, 51 units and 11,900 square feet of retail. One of the holdups has been that there's a tenant in the property, Barcade. They're finally getting out on April 30th, which is in a few days. My client has already filed for a demolition permit for the part of the project that it can demolish, and it's working with Historic for the part of the project that it is preserving pursuant to its approval, and it has building plans already to be filed once those two previous approvals that I mentioned are granted. So I think this is probably the last time I'll be before you for an extension for this project.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Any questions? Anyone? Okay, is there anybody here from public that wants to comment?
Saying no public, I move to close the public.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Who is this? Joe, anything you want to add?
Mr. McCann, I would just like to confirm with you that the applicant agrees to the original conditions from the original approval.
That's confirmed.
Then staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2025-0046 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Let's move on to item C. It's case P2024-0149. It's a preliminary and final major site plan and conditional use for 523 Tunnelley Ave. This was carried from March 25th with preservation of notice and testimony taken. Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening. For the record, Joe Paparo from Porzio, Bromberg, and Newman, on behalf of the applicant, Grass House LLC. As noted, this is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval and conditional use approval for a Class 5 retail cannabis facility at 523 Tunnelley Avenue, Block 3203, Lots 7, 8, and 9 on the city tax map. Just for some background, this site is located in the HC Highway Commercial Zone, which conditionally permits cannabis retail uses. The operator of Grass House is Michael Price, a lifelong Jersey City resident who resides in the Heights area. He's very active in the Heights community. That information was supplied as part of our Community Impact Statement. Also noteworthy is Mr. Price is a social equity applicant, which the New Jersey cannabis legislation was based around. This application presentation was presented before you initially at the February 25th Planning Board meeting. We introduced information and testimony from our project engineer. Because we're seeking site plan approval for some upgrades and improvements to the site, we started with our civil engineer during the course of his testimony. There was a discussion regarding comments from the JCMUA. At that time, we decided to adjourn to give us an ample opportunity, excuse me, to address those comments. Thankfully, over the interim period, we've successfully addressed all of the JCMUA comments. We received an approval letter dated April 17th, 2025, which has been uploaded through the Jersey City portal and should be part of your official record. Mr. Ward was also provided with a courtesy copy. Thankfully, we've satisfied the JCMUA on the technical stormwater drainage and engineering issues. And what we'd like to do this evening is just to pick up the presentation with the project architect. He'll now take you inside the site, inside the building, rather, moving away from the site improvements now into the building to talk about the renovations to this existing structure to make it appropriate for the cannabis retail use. Mr. Elkins will also talk about operations. As I've noted, Mr. Price, the operator, is here if there's any specific questions. But let's begin, if we may, Chairman, with the project architect.
And just for the record, Commissioner Patel, you weren't at that meeting. There was testimony taken. We've carried it tonight, including the testimony that was taken. Did you have a chance to read the record?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So you are allowed to vote on the application tonight, and the board has quorum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Chairman, I also wasn't at that meeting, and I have read the transcript.
I apologize. I thought you were here. I assume you're always here, Steve.
I was here spiritually, but not physically.
Excellent. Is there a video cable that I can connect to?
Yes, Cam can handle that for you.
Oh, thanks.
Or mic.
Usually, there's one here, and I didn't see it today. All right. I do.
Ronald Elkins, R-O-N-A-L-D. Elkins, E-L-K-I-N-S.
Mr. Elkins, for the benefit of the board and the public, can you provide your education, area of expertise, and the licenses you hold, sir?
Counsel, that's okay. We've qualified Mr. Elkins before. Your license is current tonight, sir?
It is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you, Chairman.
Great. Well, thank you. Well, as Mr. Paparo mentioned, this is 523 Tunnelley Avenue, also known as Block 3203, Lots 7, 8, and 9. Again, highway commercial zone, which does allow for Class 5 cannabis retail use. The existing property is an existing kind of mixed-use building, retail, ground floor, apartment above, with a masonry addition for a mechanic garage on the rear of the building. It's existed. Currently, it's a wood-framed building. As far as the scope of work is, we intend to demolish the, let's see if I can point here, demolish the one-story masonry garage at the north end of the property, and then basically remove all of the existing vinyl siding on the exterior of the building and replace that with an updated siding, which I'll get into more in the presentation. We also intend to demolish the majority of the interior of both floors. And the crawl space is only about 4, 4 and 1/2 feet ceiling height down there, so it's not really a habitable floor. I'll get into that a little bit more on the new plan presentation. On the site work from the civil testimony that was given at the last hearing, we are essentially taking the site, which is 100% impervious, and removing a lot of that asphalt, opening up landscape areas for additional rainwater runoff, and then also reconfiguring the parking lot with the removal of the existing mechanic's garage in the front, as well as new landscaping and new beautification efforts throughout the property. The interior of the building, the first floor is off to the right, or I'm sorry, the first floor is in the middle of the page. The customers will enter on the south end of the building, where they'll have their identification checked, make sure they are at least of legal age. Once that's approved, they basically have access just to the retail area, where they'll make their selections, make their purchases, and then go to the point of sale or cash registers here at the front, where they will complete the transaction with the purchase. The upstairs is essentially the storage vault that's secured through multiple means, through secure doors, secure wall construction, floor construction, ceiling construction. No one should be able to access that area, as well as an office for the business staff. Once an order is placed, a staff member that works predominantly in the vault will gather the order and then send it down a spiral chute, which will end up behind the bud tenders, who would then pass the order over to complete the purchase. Once the purchase is complete, then the customers exit to the west of the property, directly to the parking lot, which is obviously not shown on this plan. As I mentioned before, the crawl space basically is just a couple electric panels and just open space currently. We will also be providing new mechanical ventilation with carbon filtration on a dedicated exhaust system on the roof, as well as new heating, cooling, ventilation systems throughout the building. Once deliveries are received, they will be received in the rear of the building, where they will be unboxed, put into the digital inventory, and then taken directly up the stairs to the vault for secure storage. This is the secure access plan. Basically, you can see from the legend here, the totally white areas are basically areas where customers have access before their identification is checked, which is basically immediately inside the front door, up to the ATMs, and that's it. Once their IDs are checked, then they have access just to the retail area. The double-hatched areas are staff-only, and that includes the crawl space below.
Mr. Elkins, that space is key-coded for employees only. There's access codes that need to be entered?
Exactly. And so the security plan has been redacted, just because this is a public hearing. But essentially, there will be cameras, security cameras, in every room, except the restrooms, of course, and secure key fob locks on every door. Any, let me backtrack. One, you can see that there's also a couple of waste bins here. That is basically to store or to stage any cannabis-laden waste, whether that's boxes, or bags, or any kind of material that might have a cannabis residue on it. We will securely store that in these bins inside the building, and then pull it out for a scheduled waste hauler pickup.
And that cannabis waste is picked up by a vendor specifically for that purpose, not general waste?
Exactly. A dedicated licensed cannabis waste hauler. Again, the security cameras will also be added and additional lighting into the crawl space area. The exterior of the building, as you can see, looks completely different than it did before, or than it currently does. Essentially, the structure is the same. All we're doing is peeling off the residential-scale vinyl siding, adding a metal panel siding to the facility, and enclosing some of the windows, mainly for security. And any windows that are visible will have an obscured film to limit any visibility into the space. Signage is kind of uniquely located close to the ground level, mainly because in the highway commercial zone, there's a limitation on the height of signage relative to the height of the building. And since this is an older building that predates the current regulations, those same regulations still apply, but the fact that the building is only two stories versus much higher, the signage is relatively low to grade. And that's the, you can see the red revision clouds on that. That was the only revision we had to the design of the building from the initial submittal. And these drawings have been uploaded to the portal. So what you're seeing here is everything that's already on the portal. These are just some other black and white views from around the site. And then this again is what the current site looks like. So this masonry building here would be demolished, cleaned up, fence removed, and then reconfigured with landscaping and additional parking. And I believe that was the end of my testimony.
Mr. Elkins, just a few follow-ups. Certainly, you've talked about deliveries in consultation with the operator. It's my understanding that all deliveries will be by van, an unmarked van. Is that correct?
Yes.
And do you have an idea of frequency? Was that discussed in your consultation?
That was not discussed, but that should be something we should address with the owner.
And the building materials you've identified, there will be compliant site lighting as well with the code?
Yes. Let me return back to the site plan. We do have site bollard lighting, I'm sorry, not bollard lighting, just site lighting, parking lot lighting throughout the site, as well as on the north and west facades of the building. So there will be ample lighting on the site, but still complying with the lighting regulations in terms of minimizing overflow to adjacent sites.
And it's my understanding there was a lighting plan submitted with the engineering materials?
Yeah, photometric study was provided.
And this application complies with all the conditions of the conditional use, is that correct? And the signage, you've oriented it to comply with the code and not require any variance relief, is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
Mr. Elkins, in your opinion, is this a fully conforming cannabis application?
I believe it is.
Is there any other details? You talked a bit about the ventilation that's required by ordinance for odor mitigation. That will all be resolved with the building department to ensure that it complies with their requirements?
Yes, it will. Once we pass this approval process, then full engineering calculations will be provided.
And that's part of the construction department?
That'll be provided, yes, part of the building department review.
The applicant will comply with the ordinance requirements for hours of operation?
Yes.
And trash removal, you've talked about the cannabis-specific refuse. However, there is a dumpster for typical office refuse that has not, you know, been tainted with any kind of cannabis?
Exactly. That'll just be for general wastepaper, lunch leftovers, things like that, so.
Okay. And that'll be handled by a typical waste hauler, not a cannabis vendor? Chairman, that's the extent of our presentation. Happy to answer any questions. We do, again, have Mr. Price, the operator, here if there's any additional testimony you'd like to hear this evening.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Does anybody have any questions on architecture? Okay.
What about the letter from the MUA?
That's, we're gonna get there next. So Counsel, we have a new letter from the MUA. I just want to make sure that everything is complied with that's in that letter.
Let me just, one second, let me just pull that.
And also, I do want to talk about the transportation comments from Traffic and Engineering. I don't think there's been any testimony on that yet.
Is there a report that I'm unaware of, chairman?
It's from October 28th, 2024, from Michael Manzello, Lindsay Schofield, Division of Transportation Planning, Jennifer Wong, Division of Traffic Engineering.
We do have, I believe, our traffic consultant is here. We can call him next to address those comments. I appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Sure.
If we want to address the MUA, I'm happy to do that now as well. That's the April 17th, 2025 letter?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, as I mentioned, I'm happy to speak further on it. This was a result of the latest plans that were submitted by the project engineer. We did receive this by email from the MUA, and it says there's no further review comments. There are two, I guess, items that need to be acknowledged and followed as part of construction, and there's no objection to that. That's the last comment.
So Counsel, for purposes of the record, it looks like in December, there was the MUA letter.
Correct.
That raised the issues we spoke about last time.
Yes, sir.
There were revisions submitted, trying to address those comments, perhaps some conversations. In, I believe it's April 1st, the MUA put out a comment letter that there needed to be some revisions on the plans that were submitted.
Correct.
And then.
Ultimately, we ended up, yes.
That is April 17th. The MUA says they have no further comments. Presumably, that whatever was requested in that April 1st letter was addressed to their satisfaction.
Correct. Yes, correct, Counsel. And if you notice that in that April 17th letter, they do reference the latest revision date of the day before, April 16th. So that shows the progression from December all the way up to this final approval letter.
And those plans have been submitted to planning?
Correct. Both hard copies and the uploaded versions to the portal.
With that April 16th revision date. Those revisions, no?
No.
Counsel, do you have a civil engineer that's gonna give presentation on the new plans tonight?
He's here. If you feel it's necessary, we thought that, you know, in the interest of time, since we have a letter that shows that he's addressed all those comments, we didn't know if it was necessary, but we're happy to recall him if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we should definitely have testimony on the new plans, being that they've been submitted since the last hearing and haven't been presented to the board.
Okay. We could certainly do that. Did you want to, I can call him next or move into the traffic? I know there was a traffic comment.
I'll leave that up to you.
Sure.
Whatever works.
Okay, let me.
Folks, please take conversations out to the hallway if you must.
Before you begin, yep.
Okay, hold on, let me just. I do. Guy Lagermarino, L-A-G-O-M-A-R-S-I-N-O.
Mr. Lagermarino, good evening. You're the civil engineer of record on this project. You were qualified at the last time, the last meeting we heard this. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified. If you could, just walk us through the updates on the plan.
So I went back and forth with JCMUA on this. They were not too happy about doing the pump, the additional pump. There is an existing sanitary that they've already approved years ago, which are in, and that can be changed because they already paid for all their fees, and that's in right now. We're gonna reuse that for the new establishment. So what, and the last conversation that we've had before here when I was giving my presentation was that we had pipes, then we went, we can do half-pipes, which would be seepage. In the end, JCMUA went back and forth with our meetings. That's why this is really current as of last week, that we discussed that they decided they were not happy with any of the runoffs and that they wanted to do any pumps, and they didn't want the counter to be. And they didn't want the county to be involved since the county road, and they would have to go there for their approval. So they felt best decision would be to do three bio-retentions. So that's what you see, the one at, I don't know if I, this, this one here, which is the first one, and then we have a second one and a third one. And in the bio-retentions, there's plantations, plants, shrubs, and trees, smaller trees than what I've already had for, on the street side. And those, the shrubs will give coverage and see, allow a lot of the seepage of the runoff for the building to go there. I maximize the amount of it, since we do have, most of the presentations I've done here before, we don't typically have a lot of square footage. But this, this case, we do, and we're able to use three bio-retentions systems, which would also have like a grid mesh system at the base of it. And they will allow the water that's coming in, the runoff, go there. So of course, anything greater than 100-year flood event, there will be possible overrun to the street. But they've allowed that, and JCMO agreed that it's okay. So that's the only big changes that we have there. So we eliminated completely anything related to pipes or storm tech half pipes for seepage.
They've gone with the bio-retention?
Bio-retention completely. Based upon the square footage that we have, that we can. So it's a strange event in Jersey City. Most people don't have a lot of parking lot space, so we have that.
No, of course. What's the, the print that's in front of us, the drawing? That's, what sheet is that? I just want to reference that to the MUA's letter?
Yeah, C 302. And then that, she agrees to the three bio-retentions with the amount of landscaping that we put into it and, and the amount of details.
Okay, and your revision date on that is?
I think it's the 16th or the 17th, I believe.
April 16th.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I just want to match up drawings with the MUA's report, that's all. Anybody, any questions?
Chairman, from Mr. Lagermarino. So in the first paragraph of that letter to you, it ends, the ending sentence says, "Prior to starting construction, an MUA SOR application permit must be submitted to issue an MUA SOR permit." So is it your understanding that you've met all the conditions that would enable you to submit an application without incident?
Yes, that's me, 100%.
Okay.
Satisfied, Steve?
I'm good.
Okay.
If the MUA is good, I'm good.
Okay, anybody else? Anything? All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate your time.
Chairman, we do have our traffic engineering consultant. We, it doesn't, it appears that no one on our team has that report, but we're happy to, to address it. I think there's, you know, you're working diligently with the DOT. This is on a state highway, obviously. But let's, maybe we can walk through these few comments.
Well, counsel, let me ask this question. Part of the portal, there's a report from a traffic engineer dated June 27th of last year. Was that read done by this gentleman?
Yes, that's our circulation of parking, oh, yeah. Yes. Sir, Connor Hughes, C O N N O R, last name Hughes, H U G H E S.
And Mr. Hughes, before you testify, your education, area of expertise, and the licenses you hold?
Certainly, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. License is incurred in good standing. I've prepared hundreds of different traffic impact studies across the state, and I've been accepted as an expert witness at numerous municipalities throughout New Jersey.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes, you're qualified.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Lipsky, I believe the traffic memo that their professional is not in possession of is the October 28th, 2024 memo from Transportation and Traffic. So there's three items in that, counsel.
So that's on the portal, counsel?
Yes.
It's identified as the 523 tunnel-y transportation comments, I believe. But for efficiency and to expedite this, the memo states, "The Division of Transportation Planning, Division of Traffic Engineering, reviewed the site plans and traffic impact studies submitted by optimized two-point perspective in dynamic traffic respectively. Number one, driveways. Please keep a continuous sidewalk accurate across the site driveways with the apron beginning in the furnishing zone in line with proposed tree pits as per Jersey City standards. One B, please note that the new driveway along Route 1 and 9, per end, tunnel-y ave, per end, requires NJDOT driveway access permit application. Number two, sidewalks, two A. Please update the site plan to indicate sidewalk widths and the width of unobstructed pedestrian access route on the sidewalk between the edge of the proposed tree pits and the property. An absolute minimum of 48 inches is required to meet pro-wag. However, Jersey City standards call for five to six feet. Jersey City Division of Forestry standards can be consulted for more narrow tree pit options. Two B, please include sidewalk reconstruction along the entire site frontage as the existing sidewalk is in disrepair and does not conform to Jersey City standards. Three, electric vehicles. Three A, please provide testimony about the site's compliance with the electric vehicle ordinance published by DCA on September 1, 2021 in regards to electric vehicles and make-ready parking spaces.
All righty. So I think I got most of that. But so as far as the sidewalk construction, we'll make sure that we are in compliance with all those comments. Obviously, any construction within the DOT right-of-way is also gonna have to be in conformance with New Jersey DOT standards. But we'll be submitting for that access permit, of course, for the new driveway along Route 1 and 9. As far as the electric vehicle spaces, I don't believe we are proposing any, and that's because when yours, less than 25 retail for any commercial uses, if there's less than 25 spaces proposed, there's no electric vehicle spaces required. So we're in compliance with that, that statute. So if there's any additional input that's needed for addressing that, that letter, I'm happy to.
And so counsel, I don't know if the revised drawings addressed any of these comments. Did they not with respect to sidewalks and tree pits?
The sidewalk, I just spoke with the civil engineer, and he can accommodate the width.
It hasn't been addressed on the drawing as now?
I don't believe the current plans do the current, let me just recall Guy, since he let's have the engineer come back to see if the four-foot wide sidewalk is reflected.
The sidewalk's rather narrow there on Tunnel Avenue side. So we've already tried to present this to the DOT, which they might have some issues with. But again, this is a pre-existing condition, and we're trying to be in compliance. We have about seven feet or so of sidewalk width. And the tree pits, based upon Jersey City standards, it will be cringe upon it, but for sure, you're gonna have at least three feet access.
So this is requiring a minimum of four and up to Jersey City standards for five to six. They want reconstruction along the entire frontage. So I understand that you gotta go to the county, you gotta go to DOT.
Not go to them, they have jurisdiction. And if it's in their right-of-way, they get to decide that unfortunately or fortunately. So we can certainly make the request, but if the DOT only allows a certain width in their, in their right-of-way, the city would have to, you know, acknowledge that. They have jurisdiction over anything that's in their right-of-way. But if it's anything on the property, you know, that's a different story. But I just want to be clear, I think our traffic consultant acknowledged that he's working through the DOT for the, for the permit, and the other road is a county road. So we've got two other agencies that are gonna speak to what's in their right-of-way. So we, we're happy to work with the traffic department on that. I think we can find a compromise, assuming, assuming every agency's satisfied.
I think, yeah, I think, well, since this was last hour, in regards to the bio-retention, that we're putting a lot more plantations and plantings inside, there's a way that we can even get an exemption on the forestry, which we have not thought that we can still try to get away with and see what the DOT stated. That's why we left it on that, on that fringe.
So I guess my question is, did we submit to the county and to the DOT? I understand there's been conversations with the DOT. Were those applications filed, and have they commented at all regarding that? Or are we waiting for this process to take place? Because this is a new whole.
As far as I know, I'm part of that, the DOT as well with the traffic guys. And we have not submitted only because we want to make sure we have approvals, obviously. Because the permit fees and the county's fees are rather hefty. So that's why we want to see, get through here first before that. We can make a contingency on that if we need to come back.
So we would, what we would do is, we can certainly revise, we could discuss it with the traffic agency for the city. And if we can incorporate a sidewalk that meets their specifications, as well as, does it infringe upon the DOT's right-of-way or the county? That would be what, that would be the plan that would go into both of those agencies. So we're happy to do that as a condition of approval.
Chairman, I agree with counsel that obviously the county and DOT are gonna have jurisdiction over different components of this, specifically within the right-of-way. And, you know, they're gonna have their say. DOT is probably gonna take longer than the county.
Absolutely. But what we'll do, though, to, to be sure that we're honoring the city's request, we'll be sure to incorporate those recommendations in that application. So what the DOT sees and what the county sees is what's being asked of us from this body. So we're happy to do that.
At the very least, the, the condition where they have to replace all the sidewalks can be met, regardless of jurisdiction.
And regardless of size, that'll all be replaced, correct?
Okay. Okay, I'm satisfied with that.
So with regard to the electric vehicle, so I'm looking at the state law, chapter 220, and it says, for public law, it was amended 2023. It says, "Notwithstanding provisions of subsections A and B of the section Retailer that provides 25 or fewer off-street parking spaces or developer, owner of a single family, shall not be required to provide, provide or install any electrical vehicle." How many vehicles are gonna be there, 17, right?
17.
So it's moot point.
Right.
Okay, any, any other questions, anyone? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. Chairman, that's the conclusion of our presentation.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from public?
Chair, I see no one from public, I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Matt, you're stepping in for?
Francisco, yeah. Yeah, so I, I looked at the, the application materials submitted prior to me taking over the application and have ushered through the reviews of the application, of the application materials that come in thereafter. There is a memorandum that Francisco authored that I've reviewed, dated December 19th, 2024. Further revision hasn't been done, but the, the main facts and findings in the, in the memo still stand. This application does sit at a location where there are other concurrent applicants that are conditional retailers. And looking at the time of application, they, they're not, there's no issue here with, with the devariance. So they meet the condition of separation, because none, none officially existed, none pulled permits at the time that this application was made. This is a preliminary and final major site plan with that conditional use. We've heard architectural and engineering testimony. There's also a map attached to the memo that shows those other locations. But as I just stated, those are concurrent applications and not yet officially accepted locations. There are some memo, some, some conditions that are recommended by staff. We just asked that the applicant agree to those conditions, as well as any that we've just put on the record regarding, or further clarified on, regarding the transportation comments.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
With that, staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2024-0149 as presented to the board this evening with staff recommendation and conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded for approval. Commissioner Gangdon?
Aye.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
Upstein.
Commissioner Lipsky?
It's good to see hometown boy getting involved in business, so can, best wishes. I vote aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Chairman Lexington?
Aye.
Motion carries with four, four and one exception. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Have a good night. All right, let's call case P 2024-0241. This is an administrative amendment for 332 Whiten Street. It's Whiten.
Whiten, I say Whiten, some say Whin.
It's Whiten.
For these is my vase.
Covered it last time. And just for the record, again.
I was here.
You were here on this? You were here, Vidya, you were here?
I was not, but I looked at the video.
Okay, so Commissioner Gangdon has reviewed the video and is allowed to vote on the application tonight, Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. So this application is before the board with quorum tonight. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening. Stephen Joseph for the applicant. So just to pick up where we left off, I believe we completed our direct testimony. There was a neighbor here that raised some concerns. I believe that neighbor has since retained counsel. I also believe there was a site visit that occurred by
Yes.
by chairman, by neighbor's counsel, by, our architect went back out to the property as well. So if there's any questions, anything that we can address at this point, we're, we're happy to, to do that.
So why don't we do this? Let's bring up the neighbor's counsel. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening, Commissioners. Gerard Pizzillo from Genova Burns on behalf of Alma Coleman, owner of 334 Whiten.
Okay, so I did do a site visit on the property. What I did find is, I don't think it's terrible. And Jordan, if you back me up on what the neighbor wants, the Coleman's want, and claim that, you know, was done to their property, and I'll just address everything one by one as we go.
So Chairman, I think before we do that, I think, you know, for, for clarification purposes, there were some legal issues that had existed in terms of some of the things that Ms. Coleman had mentioned that I don't believe are of the moment at this point, based on everything that was submitted by Mr. Joseph with respect to the property line, and if there was an issue with the property line. And then the remaining issues had to do with any type of damage done to Mrs. Coleman's property. And if there were any issues left unresolved. I went back and reread the transcript, and there was a question, what I believed was a question regarding the fence, that turned out not to be a question, is my recollection and confirmed by the, the transcript. So counsel, I think if there's anything that, that you care to add, I think it's best to maybe proceed that way.
Sure. So my clients have objections across the board to this project. To counsel's point, not necessarily to the items, or in addition to the items that you're considering this evening, their objections go back to the development as a whole, or the project as a whole. So they are still in opposition to the project. They are opposing the amendments this evening. As it relates to the damage question, as Mr. Joseph, he did indicated the trans, or the, the hearing the last time, and I did, was able to confirm that with my clients, the items that were damaged during the construction have been remediated. You know, so the only outstanding item that was discussed at the last hearing that remains outstanding this evening is the power washing. Now, without getting into the specifics, the concern is with the larger objection and the lack of trust, excuse me, the lack, the, the lack of support of the project, the objection to the project, and the lack of trust generally with regards to how everything rolled out here between the two owners. My client is, she wants the power washing done, but that's insignificant to the issues that really remain. And without watering down or, you know, affecting her potential legal positions later on down the road, you know, it's almost as if the, the power washing could be done, it could not be done. It, it doesn't really matter from my client's perspective. I mean, look, they made her house dirty, right? They, they did all this, yes. Would she like her house cleaned? Yes. You know, but she's not going to want her house cleaned, you know, in it, you know, in exchange for giving up any potential legal rights that she may have with the project as a whole. So I'm reluctant to agree or have her agree to accept that with the understanding that it could later on come back to bite her.
So Chairman, I think the proper way to proceed with that respect is to accept counsel's position. The board hears you. I appreciate it from a legal standpoint. Counsel, I think it would behoove you to continue to try to work and be the good neighbor. With respect to the legal points, counsel, as you know, this application is backed as a amendment to a prior approval. I know that you are more than learned in the area. We're at where we're at and I'm not going backwards. That being said, the thing that gave me the most pause, Chairman, and I, I believe for the board at the time, was a question regarding a property line and if there was an encroachment. And I have not seen anything that evidence is that there is a dispute about the property line or that there is an encroachment. Everything that has been submitted by the applicant that I have seen, Chairman, is that there is a party wall between the two properties. So counsel, I, I don't know if you have anything, and when I say you, obviously if your client was able to produce any kind of a, a survey to dispute any of that. We haven't seen it. I suspect they haven't provided it to you because knowing you, you would have provided it to Mr. Joseph and, and brought it to this board, so.
I absolutely would have. And, and to that point, I, I have not submitted or I have not received any sort of, you know, disputing survey or disputed survey or opposing survey really is probably the proper term to show any encroachment onto my client's property line with the new building that's been constructed. That's correct. So we are relying at this point, the most current survey documents we have is the, I guess, Mr. Schmidt survey from some point earlier this year.
Which is Mr. Joseph's client's survey.
That's correct.
And you just, you can preserve all of your client's rights, absolutely, but you don't have anything that puts that survey in dispute. And Chairman, that survey is what the board has.
Sure. That's correct. We do, I do not, and we have not submitted that. That's true.
Okay. So the board will make its decision based on that survey that's available to us, that's in our record, and we'll move on from there.
So one question for counsel is knowing that this survey came up on February 14th, and it may be in question, why isn't it that your client didn't seek to get a second opinion?
I, I think she's exploring that. You know, the surveyors, that's her decision to make, you know, I, I can't really answer as to that, but it's, it's something that she's looking into doing.
But you yourself representing your client and not saying that the survey we have from Schmidt surveying submitted to the portal on 214 of this year is in dispute?
No, I, I can't come to this board and, and say that's in dispute at this point because I have nothing to say otherwise.
Fair enough.
Right, you don't have anything to, to dispute it. And this board doesn't have anything to question it. So for this board's purposes, we have to assume that the survey is correct. If it turns out that the survey is incorrect, quite frankly, that's a property dispute between neighbors that would have to be litigated in the Superior Court anyway. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood. We have a survey, it presents as a party wall, and there's nothing out there that's saying that it, it's anything other than that. Which, obviously, we deal with this all the time around the city. This is not uncommon. The board is, is very familiar with party walls. So I just wanted to make sure and we got it all out on the record that, that that's the facts of this particular matter. So Chairman, what we're going to do is the testimony has been concluded and it is now time for, counsel, I don't know if you have anything further. I don't want to cut you off and not give you the opportunity.
I don't have anything further, just, you know, of course, my clients will continue to agree to power wash the adjacent building once all the contractors are out of their property. So that's regardless of whatever legal rights they're preserving, my client has already agreed to do that and will continue to agree to do that.
Okay, so counsel, there's, there's more work to be done on the property, correct?
I, I think there's just some finishing work going on now, but they didn't want to power wash it in, in the middle of anything going on.
Okay.
There's finishing work going on, on your client's property.
On the inside, yeah.
Interior. Mr. Lewis jumped up real quick, probably because there's going to be some.
We're also proposing to change the windows as part of this approval.
Yes.
So there would be additional outside work.
Correct, correct.
Based on this.
So Chairman, what's before the board is Mr. Lewis's modifications to the building as previously testified by Mr. Lewis. And then obviously, if the board were to grant those changes and everything that goes with it, that work would then happen because that work with respect to the windows and such is being proposed. Again, some of the work had already been done, which is how we landed here in the first place.
Correct, and, and the work being proposed, modifications being proposed, some of it is somewhat substantial, changing the, the windows.
Okay. All right, thank you, counsel. There is one other thing that I want to address on the property. The side door that's in the side yard is not secured. It's, you know, I was there on a windy day. That door is just blowing open and closed and it's obviously loud. I couldn't imagine what that's like in the middle of the night. And I believe that is the room that contains the back flows for the sprinkler system.
Okay.
I didn't see any heat in there, Mr. Lewis. So number one, the doors should be secured. Number two, you know, from my angle, I couldn't see a heater. I'm hoping there's a heater in there, but obviously there should.
We, we will secure the door.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay, so with that being said.
Chairman, one other question to Ms. Joseph. So then, it might understand you accept Mr. Pizzarello's representation that the remediation being sought except for the power washing has been done?
Yes, yes, and it was our position the, the last time and, and I believe the last time on the record, we also offered to do and, and anything else that the neighbor wanted us to do, but we haven't, we haven't heard anything else yet. So the, the power washing is the only outstanding item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Cam, do you have anything you want to add before we go into a motion?
Just to guide the board's decision, so the alterations that were made here obviously were of the historic fabric and the historic preservation staff have issued a new staff memo. And all of these changes have to be done in working with the historic preservation staff. And, you know, as far as the planning, specific designs of the building, the lock coverage, the rear yard, the bulk of the building has remained the same. So it still meets the objectives and goals of the redevelopment plan and it is bringing the site into closer conformity with what the plan envisioned for this lot. So from the planning perspective, planning staff still recommends approval. You know, again, all the changes here were because of the historic fabric of the site and what the board has worked out and designed is going to bring this closer to that historic design. So with what the board has worked tirelessly here at doing, planning staff is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you, Cam. Counsel, I am going to put on the record, I would like a condition of approval that the neighboring property is made whole by any damage that was caused during construction of your applicant's project. And that's with satisfaction of the neighbor and that can be worked out between you and their counsel.
Specifically related to the.
That's too much.
Damage, not to the project itself.
Yes, to any damage that was made to the neighboring property during construction.
Understood. Got it. Yeah, so the, the applicant has no objection to any of the conditions, but the applicant agrees with the conditions.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, I, I have to ask, and you agree to the conditions in the January 2nd memo of this year?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cam.
Thank you.
Mr. Jellic, to make a motion at this time to approve case P2024-0241 as presented to the board tonight with the conditions outlined.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin? Commissioner Lipsky?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
So my vote is aye, but I do want to put on record, I did the site visit and I, you know, I, I'm appalled by damage that occurs to another property, a neighboring property. We always talk about being good neighbors. And, you know, there's obvious concrete that was splattered on the neighboring property. And I don't know how long before I was at the site that that concrete was poured, but it's still there. So, you know, I, I can't believe that it, it has to come to this board and for the neighbors to have an attorney for this to get cleaned up. So, you know, that aside, please clean the property up. That's all we ask. And my vote is aye, and that's all I have to say about it.
Motion carries four in favor, one abstaining.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to take a break right now, but let's get set up for 87 Bright Street in the meantime. And let's move on to item A is case P2024-0088 for 87 Bright Street. Before we do that though, Cam, I think we have a few attorneys that want to carry their applications for tonight?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. So I, I received correspondence from the applicant on case. Item 16 on the agenda, applicant is T-Mobile Northeast LLC, and they have requested to carry with preservation notice to May 27th.
Okay, so case P2025-0034 is carried to a date certain, May 27th with preservation of notice. Anything else, Cam?
And then Eric received correspondence as well.
Yeah, I'm the review planner for item 19 under New Business, 24 Bright Street. They're requesting to carry to a date uncertain, so they're required to renotice.
Okay, so we'll be, are we calling that adjourning or just carrying to a date uncertain? Okay, so we're going to adjourn case P2024-0117, 24 Bright Street to a date uncertain. It's adjourned. Anything else, Cam?
That's all for now.
Okay. And just for everyone's notice, we do have a hard 10 o'clock cutoff tonight. We've gotten an extra half hour out of the security in the front, so no new testimony after 10:00 PM tonight. Okay, go ahead, counsel.
All right, Stephen Joseph for the applicant. I don't recall if everybody was here at the last hearing.
You're going to check that right now. Cam, I don't have it in front of me. Do you have it?
I was not here, but I reviewed the recordings and the transcripts.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Gangadin is allowed to vote on the application tonight. I'm looking in the wrong email.
And Mr. Lipsky, Commissioner Lipsky was in attendance, yourself and Dr. Gonzalez.
And Dr. Gonzalez was in as well, correct?
Yes.
So Commissioner Patel, did you have a chance to look over the testimony?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have quorum. Everybody present has read the testimony and.
Wonderful. Okay, so we, we did enter notices at the last hearing. We're just going to pick up where we left off. There was some confusion with the presentation, so we, we do have James Cornell here this evening. We also have George Weiner here this evening. We're going to start with James. He's going to walk through the changes to the plans. This is a previously approved project with, with amendment, so he's going to walk through those changes. We have George here that could offer some testimony on, specifically on the fire escape. And then we do have Sam Bellamy here for some brief planning testimony.
Okay.
So counsel, I would just suggest after having reviewed the transcripts in preparation for tonight, that the witness essentially start from the beginning of the testimony, only because it seemed like we didn't get that far into the testimony.
Correct.
So I think.
And there was, there was a revised presentation set uploaded to the portal as well, so that's where we're going to be working off of. So James, if you want to come up here. Share your screen and then we'll just start from the beginning.
I do. James Cornell, J-A-M-E-S-C-O-R-N-E-L-L.
And Mr. Cornell, we qualified you at the last meeting. Now your license is current tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Okay, so.
So James.
I'll just walk you through the changes as discussed with the historic preservation officer.
So, so James, yeah, you, if you could just read maybe the date on your letter, we did submit a change memo listing all of the changes from the previously approved project. Just so we, so everyone knows.
July 16th, 2024.
Great. And that's a summary of, of the changes to the project and James is going to walk through the, the presentation set showing the, the changes.
Okay, so in the, on the upper roof, which I have shown here, we previously were looking at trying to reuse this existing skylight structure. There were two of them, but both of them were unreparable. They would have been totally rebuilt. So in discussions with historic, we did away with that and there were a few different iterations of the skylights layout, skylight layouts on the roof. And this is the one that we ended up with based on the interior layouts. So down here you see all of these particular skylights that were added. So in addition, the heating and air conditioning type changed. So originally we had these condensers up at the top. Up here. Up here in this location. And then they ended up switching it so that there were two left up on the roof and then the other two were moved to other various locations on the, the lower roof, which I'll show you next. In addition to the skylight changes, when we go back down to look at the interior layout changes, the headroom had to change, so there's a little bump out here that's invisible from the front that allowed the staircase to move up in this direction. None of these issues were visible from the public right of way, any of these changes. So just to finish up with the mechanical units for the other location, I'll move down to. Where is it? Here. So on the third floor in the back area, the mechanical. Here, so on the third floor, in the back area, the mechanical units were, three of those for the compressors for the air conditioning. For the other units were moved down to that location.
Let's just stop for one second.
Sure.
What's being shown, is this a slide presentation of the documents that were submitted, or is this that set?
This is the document that was submitted.
And.
So.
Maybe it's just.
Two were uploaded. Hold on, James.
Can you just tell me what sheet you're on?
Okay, this is.
I believe it's five of twelve.
Move this back out, five. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so Mr. Cornell.
Yes.
If, if it's okay, I'd like to
No, absolutely.
Get a couple of questions as you're going through the, the, the application. So the sheet you're on now, the condenser units that were moved down, are they shielded currently, is there any shielding around them?
Yes, there's a, the parapet wall is three and a half feet wide, high in that location, so comes above the condensers on that, that section.
Okay, and how tall are the condensers?
I'm sorry?
How tall are the condensers?
About thirty inches.
Okay, and they're on a pad as well, or they're mounted directly to the roof?
No, on a pad.
Okay, so thirty inches overall, including the pad?
Um, no, I guess probably the pad is another two inches.
Okay.
But they're below the height of the wall itself.
I think we just lost your presentation, I don't see anything.
It's showing on my screen. Oh, no.
Yeah, just try the cable, it appears as though the cable became.
There it is, we got it.
I don't want that to happen again. Okay, so this wall along this side. This is a neighboring building, so there's a brick wall right in this location, so that's shielded by the neighboring building. This side is open to the other neighbor's back wall, but this parapet wall here is three and a half foot high.
Okay, so where does the neighboring building end? Does it end before the units?
Beyond our building, it goes, this is, this is the the neighboring building.
Okay.
Sir, we're using a lot of pronouns, can you give me some direction for purposes of the record?
This is east. So on the east side, the east building is much taller than ours and, and full lock coverage.
Okay, so are there windows on that side of the building that overlook those units?
No.
Okay. Okay, if we could go back to the bulkhead drawing, please?
Yes.
Okay, so the skylight, your testimony is the skylight was too damaged
Yes.
To be repaired.
Yes.
So how many skylights exactly were added to replace the one that was damaged that couldn't be repaired?
Well, there were lots of iterations, right? But in this version, there are seven.
Okay, and they?
They are, they are this smaller one, this one, this one, and these four.
Okay, and we couldn't just construct a new skylight to fit the opening that was currently there?
There was no opening, this was being moved up from the second floor and being reused in a total different location.
Okay, understood, but why wasn't a similar skylight constructed?
You know, I think it was probably owner preference at the time.
Okay.
That would be my, you know, this was quite a few years ago, so I don't remember the exact conversations, but I had a few different layouts over the years based on conversations with historic planning, preservation office and, and the owner.
Okay. And these changes were reviewed by historic preservation?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and they reviewed the new skylights that were added?
Yes, yep, they were, in the construction documents, I believe that were submitted.
James, just for, just for clarity for the board, right, they were reviewed by the historic preservation officer after they were already installed? Or before?
No, you know, that is a question, I believe if my recollection is correct, this one over the bathroom was after install.
Okay, so historic preservation knew about every skylight change except that one, correct? That's the testimony?
That is what I am.
If you don't recall, you can say you don't recall.
I don't recall one hundred percent, but that is, I'm pretty sure, you know.
Okay, so. And this was Jersey City's historic.
Yes.
Preservation.
The only thing that went to Hoboken were the, about mid, I won't say early in the beginning of the project, it was shifted to, the building department was shifted to Hoboken.
Okay, so at no time did anybody from historic preservation direct you, the applicant, the owner, anyone of any authority with this project, that they had to come back to the planning board for approvals on these?
No, it was, you know, it was a time of COVID and the building department was moving up here and we were being directed to a different jurisdiction, so it was a lot of, you know, weird back and forth stuff going on, you know?
Okay.
Chair, if I may.
Sure. Turn your mic on if you could.
If I may, I think during COVID, only one meeting we missed, all our meetings.
Yeah, I think we missed the first meeting.
Yeah, just the first meeting, yeah.
After lockdown, we missed one meeting and went virtual.
After we were Zoom meeting all.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, no, not that I can recall.
Yeah, I think the question was whether we were, whether the applicant was directed to come back to this board or to HPC at any point during the process, and the answer to that's no until we're back here this evening, but I just want to be clear, there was a lot of work, the reason why we're here is because work was, was done without, without going back to staff as well, right, I don't, I don't want to misrepresent anything in front of the board about that.
Yeah, I'm not trying to throw historic preservation under the bus here, I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just trying to get down to the brass tacks of who knew, what happened, why did it slip through the cracks, and why were so many changes not presented to this board?
Yeah, with the risk of sounding like I'm making excuses for my client, right, it, they're on the third contractor now, their original contractor died during COVID, had the original plans with them. Jurisdiction was over in Hoboken, and there was a lot of confusion back and forth about who was supposed to review what. Things weren't easy to get done at that time, so there, what happened was wrong. But there were some mitigating factors, I, I think, that makes this a little bit, a little bit different.
Okay.
One question to that, Chairman, so in the, I mean, there's two uploads of these architectural drawings, one with the as approved of eight, nine, thirty, twenty, and then, oop, and then as built. So at what point did the as approved diagram appear? I mean, at what point was that the, the guide for governing the project, the construction? Or was it?
So the original contractor, at that time we still used original stamped plans. And the original contractor had those plans, and after he passed away, those original plans got lost somewhere. So what we, what I was able to find in my records, which is what was uploaded to the portal, the only thing that we could find that was stamped was from HPC. Which is, which is what that, that date was, this application was originally approved by this board in, the resolution was memorialized in March of twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Right, so after that happened, there was a set of zoning level, set of drawings, and then, and, and then the construction drawings went to historic to get signed and stamped as well, and after we, after the plans couldn't be located, we did contact city planning about that, and they had instructed us to send over the most recent construction drawings to be, to be re-signed, and that, I believe, was around September twenty twenty, I have an email from Lindsay somewhere.
And that's the rendition that was built?
The one? No, so, so that's why we're here, right, we're here because the, the approved plans weren't followed, there was changes that weren't approved by, by staff or by, by this board.
Okay, so the the plans that that were.
The plans that are approved and that were shown to be approved are the plans at the top of the pages of this document we're looking at?
Correct, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be as.
Yep.
Okay, so those, those plans that were approved by historic in September of twenty twenty?
Though, so those were stamped by historic staff, and I believe also by, by this board. So those were the ones that got, that got approved here, there are construction drawings that got approved at this board. HPC had denied the application, but there was a condition to work with historic staff, continue to work with them on the historic elements. And anytime we have to work with historic staff, the construction drawings need to be reviewed by historic staff and signed off on.
Sure.
And those are the ones that are on the portal, that are actually signed by, by the city.
Okay, and then.
But that's at the top of the page.
Those are at the top of the page.
Dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Correct, and, and the pictures of those actual plans are on the portal. This side by side is depicting, depicting those plans at the top of the page, but, but photos of that with the signature.
So here's the question, counsel.
Yes.
After September thirtieth, twenty twenty, changes are made during construction. It sounded like historic became aware that changes had happened after September of twenty twenty and may or may not have had some input. Is that correct or incorrect?
It, it is correct because there were lots of iterations that went back and forth between myself and historic with respect to the skylights or other minor details that we were trying to work out the whole time, you know? Such as the the fire escape issue in the back was never seen that in particular and the skylights, because there was a version when there were four skylights that historic looked at, you know, that were squares and at least two squares, that's not writing, I apologize. These, these.
But there was, there was no separate approval for any of those, those changes.
They were all discussions.
And, and when the inspection came to happen for the final CO, that's, that's how we ended up back here tonight.
Okay, so counsel, and believe me, there, there is a point to all of this, so the, the drawings that were signed by historic and signed by this board at that point, correct?
Correct.
Are signed on September thirtieth, or thereabout?
Thereabout, I can pull the exact date if you need me to, but thereabout.
It's September thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Correct.
So there's two notable things about September thirtieth of twenty twenty for me. Number one, that was my fiftieth birthday. All right, number two, I spent that birthday at home because we were still in COVID. But somehow these plans got signed during COVID.
I, I can.
So the fact that COVID happened, this department and this board were more than suitable at handling any kind of application. So let's not say that it was COVID that caused the planning department not to hear this application or to bring it to this board.
That is, that is.
Because we were more than up and running on September thirtieth of twenty twenty.
Absolutely, I one hundred percent agree, I've had many applications before this board during that time. I think Jersey City and Jersey City's planning board did a better job than any other municipality in the entire state, I, I say that.
And I appreciate that, of course, but.
We, we did not in, mean, we were not trying to say that any of this is the fault of planning staff or, or this, this board.
Or COVID for that matter.
At, at all. With the contractor and everything that was happening, again, I don't want to make excuses, I'm just trying to provide some context.
And I'm, I'm just trying to get at, you know, changes were made and let's get to why they were made and who knew about it and why they were made and why they were never brought up. Okay, that's where I'm trying to go with this, so.
Understood.
Let's focus on that. Okay, go, Mr. Cornell, please. And I'm sorry, while you're on this sheet, is there screening around those units on the?
On the top roof, not towards the front, there is not. The bulkhead screens this side and the building screens this side, but there is no screening in these two directions. But there was not before, and the original four units that were up there.
So Mr. Cornell, for the record, just continue to use direction as opposed to where you're drawing, just so.
Okay, so east. This is the, the long neighboring building to the east. So that building shields those two and, and also the, the bulkhead on this side, but it does not shield in these two directions, and neither did for the original ones that were there before.
Okay, so the original units, what were the height on those units?
They were about fifty inches tall.
Fifty, five oh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they were taller.
Taller than.
They were the, for the mini split systems.
Okay. Okay, so these units are considerably shorter, they're the same?
Yes, no.
Thirty inch width.
They are the traditional ones you see from, in residential, suburban residential houses.
Okay, so are there many, there are many splits in the units?
No, no, that was part of the, the changes that happened, they, they went with the ducted system instead.
So there's duct through the building now? Okay. Okay.
And the, and the reason I chose this particular one was to talk about that skylight change that I had listed here. But in, in all reality, it probably was changed before, in the construction documents to a different skylight layout. So, let me.
The skylights were changed as the, as a preference or because of the plan not being followed through?
No, the, during this time period, they were changing the mechanical system and then the interior layouts changed for ducts and the mechanical system, and then that changed the layout where the, the skylights would be placed.
Okay.
So so there's mechanical changes with the ductwork on the, the top floor.
On all floors.
But I'm, I'm focusing on why the skylights were changed now. So there's mechanical changes, ductwork is now run through the ceilings instead of there being a mini split system on the wall. So to accommodate the duct that had to be added, more skylights were added rather than just one single skylight in the middle?
No, no, I'm sure that some of these were preferences of the owner at the time when he made the, the layout changes to the, the rooms.
Okay. All right, understood. And, and Mr. Cornell, were you the architect of record for these drawings, or
Yes.
Did you provide the as built afterwards?
No, I, I was the architect of record originally.
Okay, understood, thank you.
So. So uh then I guess I'll go back to the ground floor and go through um the layout changes. So uh uh, by the way, none none of the skylight changes or mechanical changes to the roof are seen by the public right away. Um, so
I'm sorry, I I last interruption, I promise.
Oh, no worries.
So you were the architect that changed the skylights at the owner's request?
Yes.
Okay.
With the exception of the bathroom one, um I believe that was one that was just added in there.
Okay, so it so it was that the skylights were at the owner's request, not that a contractor changed it? That they were drawn before they were installed, correct?
I'm going to say
If you don't if you don't recall, you could say you don't recall.
I I actually, I don't recall all of those.
I think we lost your cable again.
Again, um maybe it's down there. You know, we uh
This is gonna be mine.
Okay, so
I can't be a one hundred percent on that. I I apologize.
Okay, so as as the owner is requesting changes, you don't advise him either that these are significant changes and that he should go back to the planning board? These changes.
I didn't specifically mention the planning board, but I I have mentioned historic uh with all of them, because that's who I was dealing with with all the changes, you know?
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
So um in the uh, start with the cellar. Uh, the top drawing is uh the the approval one, and this is the one as-built is down below. Uh, there were storage cages. They they were not um ever discussed with anybody uh with me. Um, but these these storage uh cages were put in for storage for the units um at some point towards the end of the process.
Okay, and they're cages. They're not separated rooms at all, correct?
Right, they are wire cages.
Okay.
Um, and then they had moved the uh mechanical unit uh from uh up above on the floor above. There were there was a taller ceiling, so it used to have a mechanical above the washer and dryer. But when they switched the unit type, they had moved one and hung it from the ceiling down here, I believe. And they added a couple little heat runs, electric baseboard heats, heating. And then as part of their layout changes, they uh changed the configuration of the stairwell on the back uh inside. So on the first floor, uh the stair used to be this uh back and forth. Um, and they changed it to an L shape to go down.
Now, you mentioned the ceiling heights changed on the first floor? Am I correct here?
No, I uh if we go to um the third page, um it shows the loft area, because this was a double height space in the back. Um, and there used to be these um storage rooms above since the floor had more than ample space uh for another uh spot up there to put stuff. They they got rid of that. And they, so these little rooms above the the first floor rooms are gone. Uh, and they had um left them either full height or they dropped them and left them empty.
Okay, but that change moved the water heater to the basement?
Um, that is the uh forced air unit. Um, not um
That was a water heater you showed me in the basement?
No, uh, you know what? Is it also the water heater? I can't be sure on that. I know that it is definitely the forced air unit.
In the the cellar that you just showed us, where there was baseboard heating, so the circle on the bottom?
Yes, no, I know what you're talking about. That that's the forced air unit? Oh, yes, okay, so um I apologize, I see it now. The uh, the water heater is moved over here. Man, why is it doing that to me? To this location? In that cage in the back in the cellar.
Okay, and is that accessible? Those cages are locked?
Uh, there is an access panel from this unit to their their own uh cage underneath the stair.
Okay. So that unit on the west wall, I guess, in the cellar?
East, east.
So the west wall?
Uh, this side?
Yes.
Yes.
Right by the word as-built, what is that?
This is the forced air hot air unit. And you'd have to come down in the cellar and and access it that way.
Okay, and that's the forced air for what the first floor?
Yes, right, correct, correct.
Okay, understood.
So they're they're heating and air conditioning was moved below. It used to be above the washer and dryer.
Okay.
Um, so within the common area, I used to have a janitor's closet and um the uh recyclables and garbage out in the lobby itself. And they relocated those to uh inside the garage. So that's the change there. And then
And how 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 big are those spaces compared to the the original approved? I mean, just by eyeball, they look smaller?
Yes, they're they're two less.
So there's how many units in the building?
Four units.
Okay, so four units and there's two garbage cans and two recycling cans?
Um, you know, I I I couldn't tell you the answer to that question.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So as as you can see on this, this area is where we start to see uh the fire escape landing, which I'll leave till the end. So in the loft area, um the looking at the top of the drawing on page three uh on the east side.
Is this a continuation of that first floor unit?
Yes, yes. Um, you could see that the stairwell and landing configuration was all changed uh in this area, and then they had eliminated uh this closet. And this doesn't become a bedroom anymore. It's an office space. Um, and that the lower one more or less stays the same.
So what changes that into an office space instead of a bedroom? Is there a size issue?
Um, no, they they wanted more light to come in uh to the kitchen area. Uh, if we go back to the floor below, uh the kitchen is in this location. And they wanted more light to come in from the back uh wall up above. So they put a wall of um clear view windows here instead so that you could see through the light would come through. So you decided to eliminate a bedroom uh for that.
Okay, and this building is fully fire sprinkled, correct?
Yes. Fully sprinkled and uh two hour uh separations.
Okay, so there's a water curtain around that glass wall now, that window? Does that glass go all the way to the ceiling?
Um, yes, I believe it does, yeah.
Okay, so it requires a water curtain?
Right, right.
And is there one there? Is there one depicted on any drawings?
Uh, I wasn't involved in the sprinkler system, so I'm imagining that they would have had to to pass the building code. So I'm gonna say yes, but you know, I'm I'm not I couldn't tell you the answer to that.
Okay, so Jersey City did the fire inspection or Hoboken did the fire?
Um, Hoboken did. And I I know that I had plenty of reviews with both municipalities, so it was viewed essentially reviewed by two. They had to meet with uh Jersey City and with Hoboken. Because even after Hoboken passed um the construction documents for the final sign-off, not these changes, of course, um I had to come back to Jersey City and and go through reviews with them as well.
Okay, so Jersey City did the final
I would imagine, yeah, I guess I would say that. Final, final.
Okay, but Hoboken did the the rough-in inspections?
Oh, yeah, no, well, um, no, I believe Hoboken did all the inspections.
So Hoboken Building Department had jurisdiction over the entire project. They did all the inspections.
Okay.
Jersey City zoning still had jurisdiction over the CO. So my understanding is to get a CO in Jersey City, the final set of drawings has to go to the zoning department. And then the building department actually issues the CO from their office. That's that's my understanding. So even though the building department in Hoboken reviewed everything, did all the inspections, it still had to come back to Jersey City for the for the CO.
Okay, so the glass wall that separates the office space from the kitchen? Was that installed when the fire subcode officials did their rough-in inspection?
I I wasn't part of the the installation of the clear glass wall at all. So I couldn't tell you.
James, was the was that change on the construction drawings?
No. No.
Okay.
Chair, I just have a quick question. If Hoboken reviewed and passed the inspection, which plans did they review?
Well, that's that's the next question is so here's a glass wall that changes changes calculations for the fire suppression system because you know, as an architect, I would think you know about a water curtain where it's you know, heads on both sides of the glass that are six feet apart, exactly six feet apart. Okay. So if that glass wall wasn't on any construction drawings or installed prior to these inspections, there's no record of this. There's no building department that would know that that was there. So as far as
No, I'm sure they they've come out to inspect it a number of times, so um they would have had to seen the glass wall.
There was a separate fire inspection. They inspected fire twice. So as
Yes.
Part of this proceeding, it was requested that someone go back out to the property and do a another inspection with regard to fire egress. So so somebody was out there after this application was was filed. And there's a sticker, I believe, on the portal.
Okay, so the application that's in front of us as drawn in front of us tonight is what that fire official saw?
Yes, right.
Correct.
Okay.
As constructed.
Yes.
But counsel, that sticker's specific to the fire escape?
It's they were asked to go out there and inspect fire egress, and the sticker says fire escape on it. So they went, I know they went back out to the to the property after this application was filed, after all this stuff was built.
Okay, so this isn't fire egress that we're talking about, though. This is internal to the units.
I I would I I'm not sure what goes into the fire inspections. Um, I I would think they would
So the sticker's on the portal?
Mm-hmm.
But um, but one other question to that. Uh, when are you representing that fire officials went out and gave it its seal of approval? Approximately?
Um, it it the dates on this sticker, it was after this application was filed. It wa- it was one of the Board of Ed requests.
The Board of Ed letter is dated December tenth of twenty twenty-four.
So after
There's no question it happens in February of twenty twenty-five. There's no question that the reason the February of twenty twenty-five inspection takes place is because the Board of Ed in connection with the fire escape wanted the fire escape inspected and proof that the fire escape was constructed properly. And that's why the sticker says what it says, which is fire escape inspected. I think the chairman's point is that may be true as to the fire escape, but we can't assume and nobody should assume that that means the fire inspector went back into the building and checked anything internal to the building.
Well, in addition to that, counsel, nor are fire officials um deemed responsible to establishing whether there is an encroachment on the easement, which that's what the proportionance of the uh December tenth letter uh requires.
Sure, that's that's not a fire subcode officials.
No, no, I get that.
Area of expertise or jurisdiction.
That's exactly my point.
Yeah.
Is saying is is saying that we got the seal of approval by a doctor doesn't mean that, you know, the car is good to go, right? That they didn't get a seal from a mechanic, right? So maybe I got my heart fixed by a cardiologist, but maybe the car I'm getting in is gonna crack crack me up to die. So we don't know
Kick that up there at the end. You really stepped that up.
So we don't know. There's nothing here saying that the encroachment has been mitigated.
Sure.
So We didn't even get there.
Yeah, we're not even close to that one yet.
It's gonna be a long night. It's gonna be a long night.
It's gonna be a ten o'clock.
These rooms are not bigger than twelve feet, so even if it was in the center of these two areas, it's not more than six feet.
On the on the fire curtain?
Yes.
Okay, so the fire curtain is
So I'm sure that's
Lengthwise along the wall. Six foot center to center on the spacing, not away from the wall. It's actually less than it's from six to twelve inches off of the glass. And then along the glass, six foot on center is a fire curtain. I just odd things that I've picked up over my lifetime.
Uh, I I I under- I understand the board's point. I I take the the board's point about the in the inspection. About the inspection and what was on the construction drawings and what the situation was um at the time of
So there's Counsel, there's obviously a pattern. There's a pattern where you know, approved drawings were appro- or drawings were approved, they weren't built according to drawing. What was submitted for inspection? What was inspected and you know, now with the with the change in jurisdiction from Jersey City to Hoboken, you know, I've dealt with Jersey City's fire inspectors for over twenty years. And I know that when they walk into a building, if that print isn't stamped and sealed by the city of Jersey City and it's initialed by the department head on the other side, they will walk off the job. They will not perform an inspection. Now, I've also dealt with Hoboken's building department and their fire subcode officials. And they're fine gentlemen. I don't know if they have the same procedure that Jersey City does if they set foot in a different jurisdiction. So you know, there's there's some open questions here, is what I'm saying.
Understood. Ja- James
Was not my request to have them move it to another jurisdiction.
I understood. I'm not saying that.
When the glass was installed, did they was the building was that section of the building constructed the way it was originally supposed to be constructed and then deconstructed to then add that glass?
No.
So I I mean
But was the glass there at the time? I'm not saying it was deconstructed, but was the glass there?
When they I I I wasn't there for the inspection, so I I couldn't. When they I I I wasn't there for the inspection, so I I couldn't answer that question.
Okay, but you can say definitely that. That there wasn't a wall there that was taken down and the glass added later.
Yes, yes. The only, well, let me back up on that word of mouth from the owner when they were talking about it. I will say yes.
So you didn't personally observe it?
No, let's put it that way. Yeah, I didn't actually go and see it.
Right, so. You don't know.
We just lost your iPad.
Again. I'm being jinxed. It has something to do with that.
I think it's more of a timeout kind of.
I think it times out and then it's.
Trying to get to the bottom line of it.
I'll try to move it along like this. Okay, so. I get what I was doing, um, but I think. I I don't really have a clear answer for that.
Okay, so let's. Let's move on.
One second, Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
To uh Mr. Connell.
Cornell.
Cornell's uh comment about change of venue. In a letter dated September nineteenth of twenty twenty four from the Van Voort Community Association says, however. It's in it. I won't specify which paragraph. It says in September of twenty twenty, the owner requested the remainder of the permits. Be reviewed in Hoboken because of a possible conflict of interest.
Incorrect.
Okay, well.
That's false.
That's on the portal? The prisoner or no?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. I didn't get a secret email.
It's one hundred percent incorrect.
Were you?
So it's on a portal. It's eighty seven document. Uh, letter from community group.
Lots of false statements from those people anyway.
Well, so let's.
What's on the port? It's on the portal, right? And this is a free country. So uh, what paragraph it is. Says upload it uses uh Bright Street documents PDF. So it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight paragraph down. And then it was that Jersey City obliged and the building mechanical plumbing and sprinkler permits were transferred to Hoboken. So what was the reason that it was transferred transfer venue, counsel?
So our understanding is that complaints from the objectors made the building department transfer jurisdiction to Hoboken. It was not requested by the applicant.
Okay, do we really have to?
Well.
To go into this?
Well, yeah, I mean, because.
So my wife. Position in the city government. Uh, was seen as a conflict of interest, so then things were shifted.
And that's and that's the appropriate move.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's what I thought.
Absolutely.
And at least it's out there, right? And it's on record.
No, well, it's been on record lots of times.
Well, the only thing is I wasn't on the board in September of twenty twenty, and so when I read this in a document, I don't see your wife's or your. You know, rebuttal to it, then I have to ask for transparency sake and from my understanding. Why would this have to be changed to Hoboken?
Understand.
I think it's fair.
I understand, yeah.
And I don't want to take any.
I was just trying to avoid a lot of crap.
But so again, that's that's the appropriate move for a change of venue, and that's fine. That's why that. Exists, why why jurisdictions can move those approvals and inspections back and forth. So that's. Believe me, that's not. In question in front of the board tonight, what the intentions were on moving it. That's not where the questioning is going. That's. A completely appropriate response to the situation.
I understand.
So. If there's nothing else right now, let's continue on with the presentation and believe me, we have a lot to get through tonight. And counsel, probably the next time.
Yep. So um. Moving to the the floor just above that on the second floor on page number four. There were a number of. What I would call minor interior layout changes, and they're all circled here. Um, with uh slate shifts to the closet layout and the bathrooms, the kitchen layout, um, the mechanical. Um, area shifts over a little bit. Uh, this entryway vestibule area changes. I mean, these were all kind of minor items, so the kitchen layout changes from what it was previously. Uh, the closets aren't back to back anymore. Um, a closet that was down here originally moves up here. So all those small interior. Changes happen.
There's two units on this floor?
There are. That that did not change or the size of the units did not change. So there is, um, let me highlight this for you, so.
The one thing that you didn't change on this floor, it looks like there there's. I I understand site conditions and. You know, moving something here and there, there's a lot of changes there.
Yeah, no.
A lot of changes.
This is not, there was. A lot of iterations.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, so um, I was gonna highlight the unit, so uh this front unit. Uh, why now it's doing that again? Go back to red maybe, uh, enters here. Um, you enter towards the front of the building and this unit I will outline in red is this. Unit here. Um, this is the. Ah, oh my god. Law uh, it's just it's a non a one bedroom. What's the word I'm looking for? Uh, studio apartment, sorry. I got off track. So and then the the uh rear unit enters here and this is the um unit itself. It's a one bedroom, a two bedroom unit um with a an office area in this area. What's this other bubble?
Sir, in the back, that other bubble, that's the fire escape?
Yes, I was gonna talk about that last um when I talk about the fire escape in general.
Yeah, let's handle the interior and.
Yeah.
And then move out.
That's that's really early on the line, Adam, so. Um, so on the third floor. They decided not to have the stairwell go up from the front the way it was before. They did a switchback stair here. And then that drove um the shifting of the kitchen, uh, which is not not totally different, you know, it's a elongated. Island now. Um, the pantry was still in the same location. They just swapped around where the stove and refrigerator were. Refrigerator used to be up here. And then moved down to one long linear wall. That that's pretty much the third floor. And then on the top floor. Which the layout change drove a lot of the uh. Uh, the changes around with the roof, um, they they. When they eliminated this, they wanted to put the bathroom there. Um, and this this smaller bathroom here now turns and becomes that in that location. The closet uh is eliminated and the stairs to the um bulkhead go up this way now.
So sir, this is.
The the top.
Top of the.
Second, the second floor of the top unit. Um, it's a double.
Say that again. Top floor of.
The third and fourth floor floor are a single unit.
So on the first floor, you've got one unit. That also has a loft space.
Correct.
Then the second floor.
That's a studio apartment and a two bedroom.
But it's really the third floor?
So.
Cause I haven't seen the elevations yet.
Um, is it really the third floor? Um, no, no, because the the space in the back on the first floor unit. Is is double height for most of the unit itself.
How high is the whole first floor unit? Twenty feet?
Um, yes, right, so then in the front area, it goes down and uh. Includes the set where the cellar would have been, and that is gotta be. Twenty feet, yeah, and then the rest was about fourteen, I'm gonna guess that.
So what you're identifying as the second floor that has two units on it starts at elevation. Twenty or so?
Um, when uh, this is uh, the third floor, so um.
This is third or third and fourth?
This is third and fourth, yeah. So it's not not the second floor. So the second floor, yeah, I see what you're saying. So the second floor of the top unit. Not the second floor of the building. So the second floor of the top unit is the fourth floor, if that's what you were getting at. Apologize.
That's what I was just trying to understand.
So the fourth floor, I'll I'll describe it that way, then. Um, they they um. Made these two walk-in closets. They didn't like uh the original design of the linear one. So then during that time period, they decided they wanted me to move the bathrooms around. Um, and then it became after a number of iterations, the. The um. As-built drawing.
So that was a bedroom where the original skylight was?
Yes, so the bedroom moved uh towards the front. They wanted to have um the the root slope roof here in the front. Um, has. Like. Let's say twenty five skylights, and they wanted to include these three inside the bedroom and not inside the bathroom the way I had it.
Where's the bed?
Th- this is the bedroom.
Okay, so they moved the bedroom to take advantage of those three skylights. But again, had a. Skylight already approved for the middle of the bedroom.
Yes, that was the um one that I showed that uh ended up being unusable.
Because they put the closets there.
I'm I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Became unusable because that's where they put their walk-in closets.
No, no, the the skylight changed uh long before this layout. So that was earlier on when it was removed during the first approvals.
Okay, so just so everyone's clear, the skylight that we're referring to. Was an original skylight that was part of the historic building, correct?
Yes, there were two of them. They were not in this location. They were two floors below in the original roof.
Yes, okay, so that skylight was supposed to be moved up to the.
That that was my idea, yeah. I thought it would be nice. It was, you know, a greenhouse looking.
Sure.
Historic skylight, and I was going, you know, I had them redo all the barrel vaults on the first floor and I, you know, was going with that aesthetic. So I thought it would be nice to keep the skylight as well, but unfortunately did not work out. It was not something that was requested, if that's what we're looking.
No, no, I'm just trying to get, you know, I was on the board for the original approval.
Yeah.
I don't recall the exact details of it. I remember it being a nice project and and, you know, something like that, a a skylight that. Is pulled from a historic building and moved to the roof of the new building. I think that's a nice touch. And I, you know, it's a shame to see that not there. But you mentioned there were two original skylights.
There were two, yeah, so we thought maybe.
You couldn't piece them together or nothing like that, right?
No, they were uh rotted away. The the metal was rotted away too far, and then it was gonna be making a new one that looked like that.
Okay.
They opted not to do that.
Okay, understood.
So if we we move to the roof, I think we discussed this um already. So um, let me see where I am. The proposed rear exposed steel, so this was um, I'll move to the elevations for this, the rear elevation. So a- a- another item that I had in the rear was I had, and we spent a lot of money on this. Um, these exposed steel that worked out in a grid um that you would see in the rear. Um, and in these five windows uh were of equal size in in proportion. Unfortunately, during construction, at some point, one of the contractors shifted over uh the upper window. And then uh at some point, I don't know when it happened because I wasn't aware of it, they filled in. All the steel with brick. Um, so.
So let me just ask one question about that, cause I want to be clear. The steel's behind the brick?
Um, I don't know. I wasn't part of that. I'm guessing it must be the steel. They didn't remove the steel, but whether or not they put it.
But you saw the steel.
You used to see that in my.
You saw it.
Yes, yeah.
It was there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's part of the structural system. We we came up with it to brace the building from going from side to side.
Supposed to be exposed.
Yes.
And then the next time you were there, it was covered with brick is what you could see.
A couple of years later, yeah.
Okay.
So the um. Third floor front balcony, um, now I had, wait, there was a discussion about this. During um the planning board meeting. Um, sorry, let me get to it. And it became a non-issue when um it was brought up that this wall in the front. Uh, was. Above your uh. Your sightline, I believe, was it? I well, I I'm not one hundred percent on that sightline thing, so I'm gonna back up from that, but I believe. These front walls were above your sightline at the time, uh, and and maybe now. In my head, I can't picture it, but uh there there's a slider here in the middle. Um, so access to this front roof was for uh green roof and stuff and not to be used for entertainment. Right, but there was still approved access there, and these two side thi- things. Um, were doors at one time in my drawings, uh, and they were switched to windows instead. Um, and but they are full-length windows and they look like the doors that were there. So it really didn't change the access to the front, and you can't see it from the front of the building anyway.
Okay, so the as-bills have one sliding glass door and then.
Which was there originally.
And then there's two full-length windows on either side, okay, instead of what would have been.
Five.
The same door in the middle.
Yes.
Right, the door hasn't changed, the sliding door hasn't changed.
Right.
Okay.
And the two side accesses became windows.
Doors that became windows, and do those windows open?
They open, yeah.
Okay, they open up or they open out?
Um, I believe there's a a fixed panel and an awning.
Okay.
Way down at the bottom. Okay, so this uh I think is where we ended off the last time with the exposed brick on the side of the building. Um, so the the approved version of the building. Um, the this top above this line, I'm gonna say. Uh, on on this top area is the addition that you see from the side of the building. And this whole part here um was originally supposed to be brick. And they built a building in the meantime on the on this uh west side of the building. Um, so that area now was left. With just waterproof membrane on it, and then the side of it, next building was built against it, so you can't see it anymore.
The neighboring building.
Uh, to the.
Covers that entire side. Okay.
Let's see, where am I? Okay, the front exterior lighting. Um, if we go back to the front facade on page number nine. I originally had lighting uh in in the drawing and they eliminated it altogether, which uh I think. Uh, historic was more than happy to eliminate any lighting anyway. And. Uh, the stand pipe was a brass. Single.
The asphalt. We lost we lost you again.
Lost again, and I was drawing at the time.
So they added, let me. So they added, let me...
No, they removed lighting. They removed lighting. Guess we just have to unplug it and replug it.
Okay, so that's a light...
I'm, I'm gonna, that's, that's a different, um, that's the fire light, the, for the fire sprinkler system.
Okay, and then what's right above that? That's a horn strobe light?
Yeah, so, um...
Oh, no, that's the water meter remote.
Right, so the, I, I'm sorry, I was gonna get to those, uh, can I, um, so the, the standpipe was originally a brass one that I had proposed, uh, and they ended up putting a, uh, I just, uh, Gavin, I steal one. Um, and also, uh, they added, uh, an intercom system over in this location and some security cameras.
Okay, where are those cameras?
Security cameras.
They're, they're not on this image, but they're under the sign box.
So the, the sign, um, the sign box originally was closer to the building, which is this, this piece here. Um, but the PSA NG would not move the electrical service underground, which runs up the side of the building here. Um, as I originally, uh, had requested in my drawings, I had it behind this wall, so you couldn't see it and it came up in that little, uh, balcony on the, the floor above. So, um, and the original one that was on this building was in this location. So then, um, in discussion with, uh, Historic Preservation Office, we moved this, um, this sign out a few more inches so that it covered the, um, the pipes on the side. So it would be in front of it instead of ending to the side of it.
Okay, but the original approval from this board had that conduit inside a chase inside the brick wall that came up?
Correct. So, um, if I go back to, uh, the plan, um, the page number five, up in this corner, uh, the original conduit was coming up in this corner on the inside of the building.
Okay, but it was exposed on the second floor, correct?
Um, yes, it's above the second floor.
Why don't you go back to the, the front elevation to the...
Okay.
I don't see it on that front elevation that you just showed us.
Right, so you wouldn't see it from the street. That was the point of me putting it back there. So it would have been...
But I'm not on the street right now. I'm, I'm looking at the drawing.
No, I mean, you wouldn't see it from the front elevation of the building is my, my, uh, what I'm trying to say.
Okay, so it goes up?
Yeah, it would have come up here in this location.
And second floor?
Yeah, all, all the way up.
And then?
And, uh...
Exits on that balcony?
Yeah.
And where does it go? Where should it have gone from there?
Back across the street.
Okay, understood.
But I was trying to hide the conduit. Uh, but PSA NG gave them issues with running it under the street and, um, and under there, so they, uh, wanted the conduit in this location.
But they didn't have a problem with it in a chase inside the wall, correct? Like it was originally approved?
Um, I believe that had to do with running the wire underground to get it there. They didn't like, they didn't want to do that. Originally, it wasn't there. If that, um, maybe I'm messing that up.
No, no.
Originally, the pipe was on the outside of the building and the wire runs across the street and connects to the front of the building, just like the neighboring building. But I was trying to eliminate that in the design to, to not see the conduit running up the front of the building.
Okay, I understand. I, I didn't realize that you were proposing that the conduit would go underground there.
Um, and then, uh, these windows above, uh, in, in the storefront were operable, uh, in my first proposal, and they become fixed. The owner did not have them operable. And, um, because of the, the change in the grade here for the garage, um, door going in, the bottom panels that you see here on this original that were submitted, um, ended up being elongated a little bit more to come down. So these two panels used to be the same size as these and, and now they elongated the door and then they made the panels a little bit longer.
I, I don't mean to go back to the electric again. There's just, there's something I'm not seeing.
Okay.
So the, the conduits that are on the outside of the building now?
Yes.
And I'm actually terrified of electric. I don't know what thing about electric. So where does that conduit go when it gets to the ground right now?
Uh, into the cellar, into the cellar, goes back into the building.
Okay, so the wire comes in from the street?
Yes.
Comes down the front of the building?
Down the conduit, um, oh my God, goes down this conduit and then into the cellar of the building.
Okay, so what I'm not understanding is your original design had the conduit built into the wall?
Yes.
And came down inside the wall to the cellar?
Yes, yeah.
Power was always coming off the pole.
It was always coming off the pole, yeah.
Up to the roof?
Yeah.
Down the conduit into the cellar?
Yes.
So I don't understand...
Couldn't be seen on the front facade. But PSA NG said, "No, we have to see it on the front facade."
Uh, you know, I, I don't know about that part, um.
Because we're still running it off the pole.
Yes, no, well...
To the roof.
I apologize for that.
Well, I guess this is to three-quarters of the way up the building.
I, I apologize for that little bit of confusion. So between this iteration and this one, I wa- I requested to see if they could run it underground. And that's what I was talking about.
But just to be clear, the original approval didn't propose running it underground?
Correct, correct. I, I, you know, it's been so many years, I, I apologize for that.
Okay, but I still don't understand how it ended up on the outside of the building.
That's where they... It had nothing to do with me. It had to do with PSA NG and the electrician.
We don't know that, sir.
Yes, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, we don't know that it was PSA NG.
All we know is it's on the outside.
It's on the outside of the building?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's continue.
Um, as it was originally, unfortunately.
But when you say originally, you mean the historic building?
Yeah, the historic building had it running on the outside, a smaller service than what's there now and we had a single pole and now has two.
Well, I'm sure there were less lights.
Yeah, no, right.
Back in history days.
Yeah. A brewery, you would imagine, would need a lot of power, but I guess not.
But the, again, the approved drawings had it buried inside the wall?
Yes.
Okay, which I think is a great look.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So the, uh, the storefront itself, um, was a dark, uh, carbon color and they ended up painting it black, so it's a few shades different, but probably not as noticeable.
Okay, where, where exactly are we talking about?
This, this sign itself.
Okay.
And the, uh, the inserted, uh, new storefront facade.
The wood? Okay, so the...
Shade of the color of black was changed.
All right, so the woods surrounding the...
Windows and the doors.
Okay, but not the sign itself, correct?
The sign, the sign itself too, yeah. So the whole sign is, is black instead of the dark...
Black lettering or is the lettering...
No, white, white lettering, white lettering.
Okay.
Uh, so the, the security cameras that you, you, you can't see were added under the little extra space. I should probably erase this to try to help out.
You know what? If we could hold up one second, I don't want Commissioner Lipsky to miss anything. I, I don't know. I don't know what's going on over there. I'm just looking out. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So in the, in the space underneath the sign, um, security cameras were added. And the, the same thing happens on the rear facade. Um, they added several, um, lighting elements and, um, security camera and ventilation penetrations. So all of these items that are pulled out on the facade are those changes. And, um, yeah, so I spoke about the, the terminations of the vents. Uh, originally, a lot of them went to the roof, but, um, the, uh, I guess the people, the installers and the owners decided they were coming out the rear facade. So the last thing is this fire escape, which I will give to somebody else to talk about because I was not involved in this, but, um, I will just point it out in the plan.
Uh, before, before we jump into that, there just a, a couple of, uh, uh, a- a- at the bottom of your, your memo, there's, there's a few things there that we, we have some updates on, I think. So the, um, this, as of the date of your, your letter, the street tree was not installed. That, that has since been installed, though the weather's better now. The front signage.
Do you know how that's identified on the portal?
It's under the label cover letter, I believe.
I just saw it. From July of...
July of twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Steven, do you want me to, to talk about the, uh, the fire escape at all?
Touch briefly on it, um, before we, we go to George, but I, I do want to adjust these three things.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, okay, so, uh, street tree has since been installed. The, uh, the signage, I know there were a couple of meetings with the Historic Preservation, uh, Officer. That signage has since been remanufactured and installed on the building. There hasn't been an inspection yet, but that was done with approved, uh, shop drawings. Um, and I know, I, I think Matt did a site visit today. The green roof is, is on order. The weather is warm enough now to install it, so that will be, uh, that will be installed. There's no changes that are being requested to the, to the green roof that is being installed. It just hasn't been installed yet. So James, if you just want to touch briefly on the fire escape and then we'll bring George up to talk about that.
Okay, so, um, the original, uh, idea with the fire escape was that, um, well, one of the ideas that needed to be discussed during this, this process was that all the buildings fully sprinkled and that the units all, and, uh, the upper unit's entrance is on the second floor. So, um, there were discussions about the possibility of not having it or, um, the ajami ladder system, which, um, was, I was looking for something that would make it, very minimal on the rear facade. So, um, I had this, uh, ladder that expanded out of a gutter. It looked like a gutter on the side of the building. Um, and you pull the lever and, and the ladder comes out and you climb down. The ladder's got an, an extra pole for you to clip on, a safety harness. But, uh, at some point, um, that was changed, uh, in discussions with the, the building department by others, uh, to this fire escape system. Um, so on the first floor, it starts off in a landing, uh, la- uh, steps that go up to a landing. And then there, from above that, there's a drop-down ladder to that landing, um, from, from, uh, on page number four, from, uh, the second floor. Um, of this little balcony area. So above that, um, there's a, a ladder that is fastened to the, the wall, I believe, that drops down from this, this roof in the rear on the third floor. So you go through this area, you drop down.
Uh, James, George, talk about that.
Chairman has a question. Just, um, Mr. Cornell, were you involved in the new fire escape design?
I was not.
Okay, so there's, counsel, is there testimony from somebody else? Okay, so let's...
Another architect here.
Yeah, let's not get in, let's not have you give that testimony if there's someone else.
Sure.
Um, but I do have, I do have a question on what was supposed to be there originally. So if we could, let's back up for a second. There was a swing-out ladder that was originally...
Yes.
Approved.
Um, well, it was never denied. I'll put it that way.
By us?
Building Department until some point in the future.
Okay, so what was presented to this board?
Uh, was the, well, it was discussed. It wasn't fully flushed out at the time this was presented to the board. But it was the, the, um, pull-out ladder system. It looked like a gutter going up the back, just a single line. And there's a lever at the top of the roof. You pull it out, um...
Okay, but you have to be on the top of the roof to pull that lever?
Yes, yeah, well, well, not, I mean, on each floor, each level. I mean, it came from the top roof down to, uh, the third floor, floor deck area in the back, and then there was another one that brought you down the floor below, but they were all in this back corner.
Is there a rear elevation or a floor plan that we should go to?
Yep. So the, the, the elevation I chose does not have it in it, but it ran here. Um, and I chose this elevation because this was the ones, one of the ones that were looked at along with those drawings, uh, the plans.
Okay.
But it wasn't in there at the time, but it was in there in one of the other iterations.
Okay, but the, that would have been the necessary spot to have that. It would be, it would be a ladder from the bulkhead, the rooftop, down to that third floor landing.
Correct.
And then you cross the landing?
Yes.
And then go down to the ground from there?
Yes. And I, I, you know, I, I wasn't involved in it changes, but I know there was some, uh, some issues with whether or not it was acceptable.
We could have George testify to that.
Right.
So well, give us one second, don't run away yet. So I'm just trying to get to what was approved originally and, and that's an approved life safety device or that was...
Yeah, according to their, their literature.
Okay, and, um, so that's FL listed, correct, is the, the listing agency that would determine that that was use, its proper uses for fire escapes?
Yes, that's what it's for, correct.
Okay, okay. So I, I'm not gonna get into who changed it, who, you know, I know that's out of your scope right now. Okay, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what was originally approved there.
Okay.
And I think that's, you know, the least
Right.
obtrusive, I should say, design that could have possibly gone there.
Yeah, I was looking for something minimal. Um, I came across this system. It said it was, uh, you know, an approved fire escape system. Uh, it's used in Colorado, a few other places. I, it probably needed some literature sent, sent to the building department, but at that time I was not involved and...
Sure, I get it.
I don't know what happened.
I get it, um. Okay, so thank you. Does, does anybody else have any questions? At this time? So counsel, here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to give our court reporter a break right now because he's killing it down there for us. I haven't seen him stop once. I think you are.
Also acting as IT, helping with the cables.
So maybe we could take a look at a cable here, there to see what's going on with the cables. Uh, but we're gonna take a break, let him get a break. We do have to offer cross before your witness leaves. So, counsel, we're gonna take a break. And as soon as we come back from a break, you're allotted whatever time you need and feel is appropriate to do your cross, okay? Thank you. All right, we'll be back.
Chairman, I think it is fair to let everybody know the current time of eight forty... Chairman, I think it is fair to let everybody know the current time of eight forty and, uh, the location of where we are in the proceeding. I believe Mr. Joseph has another four witnesses and then I believe the opposition has four witnesses as well, just so everybody understands where we're at. Mr. McCann.
We're, we're not locking you down to anything right now. We're just trying to say.
That's where we are. It's not for you, counsel.
Yeah.
For everybody else in the room.
Yeah, here's where we are. If anybody else is in the room for another application, I think we can see what's happening here tonight. Maybe you want to carry your applications to August at this point. I don't know where we're going to land with it. I would love to see you carry after the break so you can go home. I don't want to keep you here all night.
I would love it just to be approved and then I could go home.
After the break. Yeah, you feel more comfortable. Yeah, you want me to do it? So we have a quorum issue that's going to come up. I apologize. We're going to lose one of our commissioners. Um, who has an emergency that's as far into that as we're going to get, but we are going to lose quorum. Um, counsel, I don't think we get your cross done in 10 minutes.
Oh, and well, you know, I might.
Counsel, there, there is an emergency. We have a commissioner that needs to leave. That causes us to lose quorum. So we're going to handle some business. We're going to carry applications and then we'll give you a date and we will pick up where we left off. I don't want to belabor it because it is an emergency and I just need to do what we need to do legally to be able to get out of here.
And I want to give you enough time as humanly possible. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll conclude it here then for the, for this application.
Okay, so we're going to break here. Once again, this is an open application for the board. There's no discussions on anything that happened tonight. Those discussions will always happen in public in front of this body. Um.
Where are we going? May 27th, Cam?
May 27th? Okay. Counsel?
Uh, that, that works for, for me. Did you, did we want to do some cross examination on, on the 27th and try to get something done? I, I'll defer to you. Right.
I don't live in Jersey City, so.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
You should. You should. It's lovely.
Understood. Just trying to move some things along.
Okay.
June 10th.
June 10th. Okay.
Okay.
Um.
So this matter is carried to June 10th. There'll be no further notice. This is your notice. We will see you on June 10th, same place, same bat channel.
And obviously the applicant consents to the tolling of time, uh, for the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, so let's go down the list. We have a number of items to carry now. Uh, let's start with item number 10. Uh, the review and discussion of FIAE Broadway redevelopment plan amendment case P two zero two four dash zero one seven eight. Cam?
Uh, that'll be May 27th.
May 27th. Counsel, that's yours or no?
Yes, number 10 is out. You have number 10 in here.
Okay.
Oh, oh, actually, this could go to May 6th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go to May 6th?
Yeah, this can go to May 6th.
We're going to May 10th on this?
Uh, May 6th.
Is that our next meeting?
May 6th.
That is the next meeting. Yes, correct.
Okay, counsel, you're okay with May 6th?
What's available, I'll take it.
I don't blame you. That's a good move. Okay, so we're going to carry that to a date, sir, and May 6th. Uh, was there notice on that, counsel, or no? Is notice required? Okay, so a date certain right now, May 6th. All right. Thank you, counsel. Thanks for hanging out. Uh, okay, item 11, case P two zero two four dash zero one two six, final major site plan for eight forty-three Jersey Avenue. Who's here on behalf of that one? Take care, Mike. Come on up. Come on up so the, the YouTube algorithm can see your face.
Senator, Mr. Chairman, um, it looks like May 27th, we're not available, so that the next available would be June 10th, I believe.
Correct.
June 10th, Cam? Okay, and was there notice with that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to carry that with preservation of notice. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, so item 12, case P two zero two four dash zero zero three five preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for one thirty-five Garfield Avenue. Mr. Joseph?
Take whatever you got.
May 27th.
Okay, so we're carrying that to May 27th with preservation of notice. Counsel, do we have anything else on here for you? I'm sure we do.
We have, uh, forty-two, forty-six Van Nostrand.
Okay, so that's P two zero two three dash zero zero nine three. Cam?
Uh, that'll be May 27th.
Counsel, you're okay with that?
Yep.
And that's with preservation of notice?
Yes. And, uh, number twenty, P two zero two four dash zero one eight.
Zero one eight four.
Conditional use.
Cam?
Um, well, it'll be May 27th.
Maybe.
Uh, and the applicants on all of those, of course, consent to the tolling of time. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. And that's with preservation of notice for P two zero two four dash zero one eight four. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. All right, going back. Look, we got 15 done. Um.
Thirteen, Mr. Burke?
Yeah, thirteen.
Mr. Burke, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm fine, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Case P two zero two four dash zero one five eight, minor site plan for three oh five Third Street. Cam, do we have a date for Mr. Burke?
It would be May, May 27th.
Yeah, I, I'm a, in Europe on that week, so, um, you would have to either go, if we take the date, I'm going to have to get someone to substitute for me. I, I hate to kick it to June 10th. You know, because this, obviously the money clock's ticking for the property.
Obviously.
So you're canceling your trip, counsel?
No, no, no. No, no, no. Believe me. I'll be in more hot water than you would believe if I did that.
We're not going to, we're not going to put you in that position. We're giving vacation. We're giving residential suggestions. Culinary, what else? Do you think we can get May 6th? Um, I, I know we have a heavy one on May 6th already.
Yeah, it's all the journals.
I don't want to put you in the same position as we are tonight where you're here.
And I don't want to say, you know, simple matters can turn out to be not simple. I mean, there's no variances. It's just, you know, minor site plan, but you just never know. So.
Up, up to you, Cam. I don't know what's on the agenda. I don't know what's coming up.
We could do it. We'll have to. We'll have to optimize the location of it, but yeah.
Okay, so we'll carry it to May 6th right now. And counsel will be in touch.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Um, counsel, do you have the original notice with me? Do you want to take this?
And that's, and we'll carry that with.
Portal as well.
Yeah, okay. And we'll carry that with preservation of notice.
All right, and we'll extend the time for a decision to June 1st.
Thank you, counsel. We appreciate that. Uh, all right, I think, Mr. McCann, you're the last one.
The lone survivor.
So case P two zero two five dash zero zero one six for one ninety Chapel Ave.
We would have to do May 27th.
Will you be yachting in Europe? Excuse me. Will you be yachting in Europe on May 27th?
I, I, I guess. Last, I'm, I'm getting the May 27th date. I don't even have a shot at the six, do I? No.
It's a blowout. It's an absolute.
All right, uh, applicant agrees to carry the case to May 27th with preservation of notice. It is a notice case, counsel.
Okay, so we're carried with preservation of notice. Thank you, counsel. So let's get to memorialization of resolutions.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions. Hello? Resolution of planning board of the city of Jersey City applicant Hamid Hassan preliminary and final major site plan approval with C variances at one nineteen Merritt Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block three zero two zero two, lot one, case number P two zero two three dash zero one zero six. Second resolution of the planning board of the city of Jersey City applicant to six fifty Grove LLC for a preliminary and final major site plan approval, block six one zero one, lot two, six fifty Grove Street is the address, Jersey City, New Jersey, uh, case number P two zero two three dash zero zero one seven. Third resolution of the planning board of the city of Jersey City Grove Street Partners LLC for an amended final major site plan approval, block six zero zero two, lot eight, six fifty-nine Grove Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, case P two zero two three dash zero zero one eight. Fourth resolution of the planning board of the city of Jersey City is an applicant twenty-two dash twenty-four Bergen Ave LLC for a minor subdivision approval at twenty-two twenty-four Bergen Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, block two four nine zero two, lot two dot zero one, case number P two zero two five dash zero zero one three.
Can you wait a second? Okay, could we have a roll call, please, Cam, on resolutions?
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez, Commissioner Gangadin, Commissioner Lipsky,
Aye.
Commissioner Patel,
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor to memorialize resolutions.
All right, do we need, uh, executive session? No? Okay. Thank you. Could we have a motion?
To adjourn.
All right, thank you, guys. We're adjourned. Have a good night.
All right.